All right, here we go. Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I call this meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order tonight, Tuesday, May 27, 2025. And we will move right into item number one, which is the consent agenda. The first item is approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting, Tuesday, May 27. We have two CUPs to consider and announcements from staff regarding the proposed best resolution. Does anybody have any issues or questions about today's agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda as printed.
Second. Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded. We approve the agenda as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, let's see. Item number two on the consent agenda is approval of the minutes from last meeting on March 25, 2025. Did everyone get a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? Is there any questions or corrections from anybody?
No.
Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from March 25, 2025.
I second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded. We approve the minutes from March 25, 2025, as printed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so now we'll move into new business. And the first item on the agenda is CUP 25-02, consideration of a conditional use permit to allow establishment of a permanent commercial structure for seasonal retail sale of fireworks at the request of Quist Home. Staff?
Okay, this is a parcel of land located in Section 15, Township 14, Range 3, generally located at the southwest corner of I-135 and K-140 highway at the request of Chris Helm, of Helm Fireworks. I've been working with the applicant since 2022. The applicant has been preparing this site for the establishment of a permanent facility for seasonal fireworks sales. Per Chapter 13, Section C, listing of permitted and conditional uses, provisions for temporary fireworks sales in a permanent structure are allowed through a conditional use permit provided certain conditions pertaining commercial facilities are followed. One condition required is that the facility undergo commercial permit review through the development review team consisting of both county and city staff of Salina. The applicant will need to construct a foundation for the structure in conformance with the adopted commercial codes for the permanent structure. It is currently a post and peer foundation, but I want to make sure that it meets whatever the proper codes are. He wouldn't necessarily have to put a slab foundation or anything like that, as long as it, the DRT is okay with it when we review the commercial permit, then it will pass. But this site is within a .01% annual chance flood zone, or that's, in other words, the 100-year floodplain. However, the applicant has been approved for floodplain fill to elevate the facility from the Kansas Division of Water Resources. Although the fill material brought in does elevate the structure to just above the base flood elevation, current status of the finished floor elevation above BFA, BFE, will be required. And it's my understanding that that has been submitted along with the applicant's application. Had brought me some of that additional information a couple of weeks back. So they did have a surveyor verify that finished floor for a second time. So Kansas Department of Transportation has approved a new entrance along K-140, which the applicant has installed per state requirements. The site is zoned light industrial and is located adjacent to a heavy industrial zone on the east side of 135. The applicant does not anticipate utilizing this facility till 2026 fireworks season. The facility is approximately 1,100 feet from the closest residence to the west. Staff has not received any comments from the public with regard to this particular case. Other departments, KDOT has indicated the approval of the location of the construction of the entrance along K-140. The fire district chief for this area pointed out last year that the facility currently is closer to the right-of-way than the 50 feet that is required for the currently enforced fireworks resolution. The review criteria, the planning commission may approve the conditional use if it complies with the following as outlined in Section 1306. And item number one, regarding location, size, design, and operating characteristics, this lot is currently zoned for industrial use and is located within proximity of other commercial uses adjacent to 135. As stated above, the closest residential use is over 1,000 feet from the structure where the sales will take place. The applicant also owns a three-acre parcel that's to the north of this location, where he has sold seasonal fireworks from a temporary stand for a number of years, as long as there is no storage of flammable items. Outside of that, allowed during the established fireworks sale dates, and the applicant abides by all provisions of the fireworks resolution, this use will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. Item number two, that the location and site planning and design will provide a convenient and functional environment. The applicant has been working with the Kansas Department of Transportation on an adequate entrance for this site since 2022. Staff has included the approval of the entrance from KDOT. The setback of the structure is approximately 20 feet closer to the right-of-way than currently required under the fireworks resolution and may need to be moved back. This facility located on, is located on a parcel with good access from the highway and interstate and based on the new entrance may not cause any traffic issues regarding ingress or egress. The structure's exterior must be maintained to ensure that it does not become an attractive nuisance during the off-season. And item number three, that the proposed development or use will enhance the operation of the surrounding area and the basic community functions or will provide an essential service. Annual fireworks sales provide seasonal revenue for the community. While it's not necessarily an essential service, the proposed facility may comply with the economic development goals of the county comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of this proposal with the following conditions. Applicant must apply for a commercial permit review with the city of Salina and provide the building official the necessary documentation for that review. Applicant must abide by all requirements of the adopted commercial building codes. Applicant must move the current structure 20 feet further from the right-of-way to meet the 50-foot requirement. Setback is stated in the current fireworks resolution, or provide a written statement from the district fire chief or KDOT that the current setback of 30 feet does not pose a traffic or safety hazard. The foundation of this structure must meet adopted commercial codes enforced by the county. Like I said, it's, they just have to look at it, and if they're okay with that the way he's got it, then it's fine. But if not, he may have to modify that post and peer a little bit to make it functional. Surveyor must verify finished floor. I think that's already been done, but I may, just out of necessity, if there's any kind of change to the, to the foundation that's required, he may have to do that again. But right now, I think the, it is above the BFE. If the applicant chooses not to apply for a letter of map amendment or a LOMA to remove the structure from the floodplain, the finished floor of the structure must be elevated two feet above the base flood. Item number seven, the structure shall not be used for long-term storage of fireworks, and the property must be secured during the off-season with a security fence or other method to prevent vandalism. The alternatives are to approve the request with conditions as listed above. Conditionally approve the request with other conditions the commission may deem necessary or deny the request.
Okay. Thank you, Tim, and staff for the report. I suppose we'll move to ask the applicant if they have any remarks they'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gerald Helmer, I'm representing Mr. Helm in this request, and I would first like to thank Mr. Hamilton. We have been working on this for a considerable period of time, and we just recently, over the last over 12 months, worked with KDOT along with Mr. Hamilton, and have been successful in complying with all the requirements we have the entrance now put in. My client fully understands the conditions that have been outlined by the, Mr. Hamilton and the requests that would be followed. We have no objections to any of those. We continue to want to work with the agencies to make this a viable, productive part of the community's economic picture. And we would appreciate if you would approve this request, as indicated by staff that they would recommend it, and we understand the qualifications to do so. And if you have questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we'll bring it back to the commission. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? None?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, I suppose at this time, and we will move to public comment to see if anybody has any remarks that they would like to make regarding this application. Please state your name and address.
Lord Mammel, Salina, Kansas. Are you going to keep records of everyone who purchased these fireworks? They are an explosive bomb material. If you combine them, I've been in EOD in the military. It bothers us veterans. You'll have collateral damage. You're too close to that interstate. If that building explodes, I-35 is not that far away. You're going to contaminate that ground. You need protective barriers around that sale site. Vehicles are being used as battering rams to do damage. So we have to keep records if you buy ammunition or weapons at a store. So you're kind of at a serious issue, and it bothers us veterans when we hear an explosion.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Okay, seeing that there's no other public comments, we'll bring it back again to the board. Anyone else have any general statements, comments about this permit? If not, I suppose I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve CUP 2502 with the conditions as listed in our agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we approve CUP 25-02 with the following conditions that staff recommends. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
And just to kind of let the public know, and also the applicants, that technically, like, for this case, it's, the planning commission approves it, and if there's a protest petition that is submitted within 14 days, then this, this case would go to the county commission for consideration as an appeal. And by that same token, if the planning commission should ever deny a case, the applicant can submit within 14 days, in writing, saying that they would appeal that to, they want to appeal it to the county commissioners. The protest petition would still be in play, so the public could still submit a protest petition even if something, even if a case is denied. And what that protest petition has to be is, it has to be signed by at least 20%. 20% is the minimum of the people who receive notice from my office. And what that does is it triggers a, what they call a supermajority vote for the county commissioners. When it goes to the county, the county will, instead of a simple majority, it would take a supermajority vote for them to either pass or override the planning commission's requirement. But, and if no protest petition is received within 14 days this evening on any, on like this case, then it's, it's approved after 14 days. It was, technically, it goes into full approval after 14 days. So just, I wanted to clarify that because there's, sometimes there's confusion over that as to how to protest and all. So I just wanted to lay all, lay all that out for everybody, so.
Okay. Thank you very much, Tim. All right, so we will move on to CUP 25-01, which is consideration of a conditional use permit to allow a competitive skeet and rifle range. Staff, what do you have reported on this application?
Okay, this is a 98-acre unplatted parcel located on the northeast corner of East-North Street and Holmes Road. It is under the, being requested by Dream Team LLC, and the proposed use is for an outdoor commercial sporting clays range. The comprehensive plan shows this parcel as zoned agricultural with a small portion of light industrial located in the southeast of the parcel. The property is located within the rural development area of the comprehensive plan. The adjacent zoning would be ag to the north, south, and west, and to the east is ag and light industrial, very small amount of light industrial. The applicant is proposing a commercial and recreational sporting clays facility open to the pub, to the public. This facility would provide opportunities for competitive sporting clay events. Although located outside the residential growth area of the city, a number of residential uses are still, you know, in this, in this particular area. This property is located within the regulatory floodplain and a portion also within the floodway. Any restroom and parking facilities must be located onsite, as indicated on, and I believe the applicant has included a site plan showing where those facilities are going to be located. Staff has received concerns from residents in the area regarding the proposed use, specifically noise and safety concerns. Staff did receive some information, some additional comments, I imagine from a couple of individuals that aren't able to make it this evening. And basically, so that would be, Mike Butler has emailed me and basically expressed safety concerns for his pets, children, and the neighborhood, noise that may be created by the firing of the guns, and repercussions of having a gun range close to our home, and possible decrease in the value of the home. And so that's, those are his concerns. Another concern is from the, Steve Winslow, says, "We do not approve the shooting range as submitted to the, to Saline County. Our concerns are related to the noise, decline of land values, and safety to the residents on our farm and other surrounding properties." So those, I'm entering those two into the record as well as the comments that will be heard after I complete my review. The CUP review criteria for this case, item number one, this site is located outside the city of Salina's urban service area, and there is currently no commercial activity within the immediate vicinity of this parcel. While the actual use will be located some distance from the road, adjacent parcels may be impacted by noise and traffic on days that events are held. The closest residence is approximately 1,000 feet from the proposed use. Item number two, the proposed use is both recreational and commercial in nature, with the exception of industrial zones located south of the proposed use. The predominant land use surrounding the parcel are agricultural and residential. Item number three, while it is true that the outdoor recreational facilities may enhance the community and other economic benefits, the nature of this use related to noise and safety concerns of the more sensitive residential and agricultural uses warrants consideration of an indoor rather than an outdoor facility at this location. Staff is unable to recommend approval of this use as proposed at this location due to the findings in items one through three above. Technically, you know, I mean, in my opinion, would be that, you know, an indoor facility would be more suited for this site based on the density of the population in that area. However, should the planning commission approve an outdoor, the facility as proposed, the following conditions are strongly advised. Applicant must construct full permanent bathroom facilities to accommodate the public, which meet requirements of the adopted commercial and environmental codes. Parking must be designed, must be designated onsite, as it's indicated on the site plan. Commercial permit review through the city is required. Septic system must meet current county requirements. Any structures must be elevated with the finished floor two feet above base flood elevation. Approval from the state of Kansas Division of Water Resources for the project, including any filled dirt exceeding 12 inches, used to elevate any structure. Item seven, no structure or development will be allowed within the regulatory floodway. Item eight, applicant may need to be, may need to be served by city or rural water. Item number nine, submittal of a full site plan indicating drainage, public parking, and any other public restroom facilities. All structures shown on the plan must indicate they will be elevated per floodplain development requirements. Item 10, an eight-foot privacy fence with additional landscape buffering for sound dampening around areas designed for, around the shooting range. Your alternatives would be either approve the request with conditions as listed above, conditionally approve the request with other conditions as commission may deem necessary or deny the request.
Okay. Thank you, staff, for the report. We will move to see if the applicant is available. Please state your name and address, please.
Good evening, my name is Nathaniel Berg. My mailing address is 410 North Fifth, Salina, Kansas. I'm general counsel for JRI Hospitality. Dream Team is a part of JRI Hospitality. JRI Hospitality is owned by Jason Ingermanson, and Jason has plans to help Saline County, develop Saline County for agritourism. This project, he intends to develop a clay-shooting-only project. There will not be rifle shooting there. The conditional use permit category includes rifle shooting. That is not, that's never been the intent. The intent has always been clay-shooting only. Industry standard there is 300 meters is the safe range for clay shooting. It's always only been clay shooting. His intention is to develop this as a clay-shooting facility for organizational events, company parties, organizations, and then as an option, as a concierge guest service for the lodging he is developing here in Saline County. So a guest at one of his facilities that he's developing for lodging could choose as one of the hospitality options, shooting at this facility. Other than that, it would not be open to the general public, and it has never been intended to be open to the general public. It's only been intended for organization, company parties, events, that he can then schedule and plan for well in advance to be able to provide trained hosts to make sure that the event is safe. We recognize and acknowledge that there would be sound, obviously shotguns, there would be sound, but we believe with the vegetation and the direction of the targeting, that that would be minimal if there would be any at all. The staff recommended that there be facilities and parking onsite, and we are happy to comply with that, but the intention is, most of the time, the people who will be hosted at the facility will be transported from their lodging to the event to then be, to participate in the shooting. This would only be clay and trap, and we do have trained staff, we have trained staff, frankly, already, to be able to provide this. You may recall that Jason, or one of his entities, applied for a conditional use permit previously. After that event, we met with county staff. Jason has well- After that event, we met with county staff. Jason has well over twenty-eight hundred acres in Saline County. We believe that this was the best opportunity for a conditional use permit in that, of the land he has, to be able to provide this service to his guests and to organizations here in the community. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll bring it back to the board. Do you have any questions for the applicant?
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. The actual application does say skeet and rifle range.
You are correct. And the reason why is because the categories on the conditional use permit, that's how we copied that. But the, the narrative that's attached to it is only skeet. It's, it's trap shooting. And if, if the commission wants to add a limitation of no rifles, we are happy to comply with that. It's always only intended to be shotgun.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I noticed around there you have some, some ground, or some dirt roads. Were you going to come to the county commission and ask for pavement?
No.
On those roads? No?
Okay.
And now, one other thing. I know you would never have this problem with anybody who would go to your facility, but if somebody like me who, when I point this way, I'm lucky I don't shoot myself, what kind of, of safety procedures are in place to take care of somebody like me that?
So we would have a range host who is trained of how to keep, make sure everyone is safe. That would not be me.
And, and it's, I tell you from, from what was said before, that it's far enough away from any road that if I shoot off over here, it won't hit a car passing on the road over there?
Yeah, the, the concern for safety that we would have would be for people onsite. That there's, there's no residences or roads within the, the industry standard of three hundred meters. That's not the case. We rec, we acknowledge the sound issue, and so we're happy to comply with the conditionals, the conditions of applying some vegetation to make sure that sound would be minimal.
Okay. Have you ever thought about making it an indoor facility?
We have not, no. This, the expectation is this is a handful of events a month. Like this is two to four events. This would not be a regular occurrence. And so to recoup the costs of an indoor facility at two to four events, we would then probably transition to having it just open to the public so that we could compensate for building structure. But that's not the intention.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Berg, what safety features are you going to put up here to keep public from accessing that place?
Well, they, it would be a significant distance off the road, so there would be a gate at the access to the, to get onto the facility.
Will it be fenced?
Will the entire property be fenced?
Yeah, just curious.
No, the entire property would not be fenced. This is a fairly significant tract of land.
Yeah. I, I've got it right here. I can see it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, at this time, then, we will open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this permit? And please state your name and your address, and you'll be afforded three minutes.
I am Dan Murray. Wife and I live at 399 North Holmes Road. We are directly catty corner from that property. We moved out there twenty-six years ago for peace and quiet. We also don't want to look at an eight-foot fence in a natural open area. I've done a little research. I am not by any means an expert. The clay that is standardly used in Kansas for skeet shooting contains petroleum, limestone. The petroleum is a binder. Those are all toxic, along with fluorescent paint, which is also toxic. There are, those clays do not degrade. There are degradable ones, but they last three to six months before they degrade. Shotgun shells contain lead shot, which is standardly used for clay shooting tournaments. This is a floodplain area, and if none of you've ever been down in that corner, when it floods, it goes nowhere. That water stays there for a long time. Now you're going to add plastics, lead, clay, brass, copper. That's going to go where? It's going to end up in the Smoky Hill River, contaminating not only everybody's property around this area, but down the river as well. Those roads will not handle a lot more traffic than is already there. You can talk to anybody that's in the flood zone commission for Saline County and Salina. It's always been an issue. There is no drainage. There is no runoff. I would also like to know who is going to regulate any of these findings that are going to take place here, because once you open that permit, and yes, the gentleman just said that, no, they will not add rifle, but once that permit is open and that permit is for rifle, that does not mean that they cannot come back in and shoot rifle, or anything else that those permits allow. Again, I moved out there for peace and quiet, and I would like to keep my sanity and peace and quiet. Two to four times a month doesn't sound like a lot unless you live there. I don't know how long you all have lived in your homes, but how would you like somebody to come in and buy the property across the street from you and put in a racetrack? Really loud, really annoying, peace and sanctity. That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Tom Maxwell. I'm a retired agronomist with K-State Research and Extension. My wife and I have lived at 436 North Holmes Road for the past ten years. We are directly south of the proposed CUP, in their backyard. For the record, my wife and I are opposed to CUP 25-01, which essentially would be in our backyard as I stated. We moved to the country, as Dan mentioned, to enjoy the freedom from noise, light pollution, and the traffic congestion of city life. We have cattle, horses, and dogs, which will be affected by the intensity and the frequency of noise from a competitive skeet range. Protecting rural landowners' rights to the quiet use and enjoyment of their property has been a bedrock of the American way of life for more than two hundred years. The applicant, Dream Team LLC, when asked in question one of the CUP application, how it will be compatible with and not adversely affect the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties and the surrounding neighborhood, answers, and I quote, "Currently, no residential properties are close." Do I need to repeat that? This clearly shows a blatant disregard for neighboring residences and their right to a peaceful environment. A close distance to our home will make life unbearable with the noise pollution created by the proposed private shooting range. Five members of our immediate family are veterans of the armed services. Each served one or more tours of duty in Iraq, Afghanistan, and the Persian Gulf. One family member has PTSD due to their military service in Iraq. We often have family members visit our farm to enjoy the solitude, peace, and quiet of country life. We enjoy birdwatching, viewing wildlife, nature, horseback riding without our horses being spooked by gunfire. Citing unbiased data, the noise from a shotgun blast will carry for two miles or more. And the noise from a rifle shot, depending on caliber, will carry for one and a half miles or more. These distances would take in facilities such as Holiday Resort Nursing Home and adjacent Salina City Limits residential areas. Adjacent homeowners' property values would plummet due to the proximity of this proposed shooting range. The city of Salina is currently preparing to spend fifty-nine million dollars for the Smoky Hill River renewal project. While yet downstream, not three miles, the proposed CUP will contaminate soil and groundwater with lead. Quoting the U.S. EPA, outdoor firing ranges put more lead into the environment than nearly any other major industrial sector in the U.S., yet they remain almost entirely unregulated. Wildlife habitat along the Smoky Hill River riparian area will be disrupted and possibly destroyed by the proposed range, which will affect many wildlife species, including bald eagle. Am I allowed to ask questions of the applicant, or?
Uh, well, currently, we are past your three minutes time, but I will allow you to ask one question before you go, if you would like.
Okay. I would like to know from the applicant, and I guess I address you.
Yes, please.
But how, how does the applicant's proposed shooting range supersede my existing right to quiet and solitude? And I ask that question in all sincerity. To conclude, the noise pollution, safety concerns, and environmental and ecological damage associated with the proposed private skeet shooting range is a compelling reason for the Saline County Planning and Zoning Board to deny CUP 25-01. Thank you, board members, for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Rick Hanson. I live at 3265 East Country Club Road. All mere with the two gentlemen prior to me. We lived in the city for about fifteen years, moved into that property a little over twenty years ago. And I enjoy the, the peace, the quiet. We're set back from Country Club Road, so I have a buffer of what was previously Doc Seabree's land. We share a pond, so I'm back quite a ways. As I looked at the, the proposal, hearing now that it's just shotguns, a twelve-gauge shotgun, measured at a half a meter, about this distance, starts at a hundred and sixty decibels. Okay? If I were to measure, and I wasn't sure downrange, or if I'm a hundred and eighty degrees off downrange, but to the closest part of the property, by the time it got to my property, it'd only be reduced to ninety-five and a half decibels. Okay? I measured today at two o'clock, the quiet of my neighborhood, standing on my driveway in front of my garage, thirty-eight point four decibels. That's a sixty-decibel difference. Okay? If I were to shout at you, shout at anybody, it's in that range. Okay? I have a rail line that runs on my property line, rail access the entire length of my property. Cars moving this morning with a locomotive attached, they move grain. Okay? That measured at forty-three dBA. Okay? We're talking about an impact that is substantial, fifty to sixty decibels above what we know as a quiet neighborhood. Okay? Again, all mere animals, livestock. My house has a four-stall horse barn. My girls decided not to ride horses. They had the opportunity with Doc Seabree and his facility. But should I decide to sell that down the road, it's a horse property. And that's outside what, you know, would be an acceptable noise level. HUD suggests the loudest would be sixty-five decibel. The NPC and EPA suggest that an outdoor value of fifty-five dBA is at the edge of an acceptable level. So, if we're shooting shotguns, twelve-gauge Remington, again, at a half meter, it's a hundred to sixty dB. If I measure to the farthest point, which is twelve-hundred-and-ninety-six meters from my property, that number is eighty-three point five, if I'm off axis, meaning if I'm a hundred and eighty degrees or at the six of downrange. If I'm on axis, that number's ninety-eight. That's what I have. I understand sound. You're listening to my sound system here, something I have experience with. I don't want to be interrupted at my home, and I'm sure everybody else who can be closer, I'm probably the farthest on the outside of that distance. It's going to interrupt my life. It's going to interrupt why I moved out there twenty years ago. I appreciate your time. If you need any of this data, I'm willing to share.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the public?
Good evening. My name is Penny White. My husband and I live at 327 North Holmes Road. We received the notice of the CUP 25-01 dated May 1st, 2025. The answers to the questions listed on the permit application state the applicant does not consider the range close to residential areas. However, many rural homes and estates are within the range in which gun and rifle fire would undoubtedly be heard. It is common knowledge and supported by data that gunshot from a shooting range can be heard potentially up to one to two miles depending on the type of weapon, ammunition, weather conditions, terrain, time of day, and wind. The two-mile mark from the epicenter reaches approximately just past Presbyterian Manor. I did understand that the applicant is stating there will not be rifles, but in my estimation, that is just the precursor, so that if there are rifles, that would be heard past Presbyterian Manor and encompasses entire neighborhoods, which also includes Holiday Resort Retirement and Care Facility. Another concern I bring forward is the impact a nearby shooting range would have on properties and neighborhoods through noise pollution, disruption, safety concerns, and overall lower quality of life. Additionally, the presence of a shooting range could be perceived negatively by potential real estate buyers, impacting appraisal factors and lower property values. Loud noises such as gunfire can negatively impact veterans with PTSD, family pets, and livestock and horses. Currently, the two families closest to the proposed site have either horses or cattle and family pets. I would also consider every other household nearby likely has at least one pet. Furthermore, environmental concerns such as soil contamination come to light. Although ammunition alternatives beyond the traditional lead shot may be used, there will be the presence of clay target fragments, which can pose a threat to the environment over time by contaminating the soil, impacting wildlife and natural habitats, and aquatic ecosystems. These factors are magnified since this location is in the floodplain. In addition, so many resources are going into the Smoky Hill River renewal project that allowing a shooting range downstream consistently in such a short distance from the city, in my opinion, is counterproductive. Let's look at the numbers. The permit application sets the participant capacity at twenty to forty shooters depending on the format, and the event frequency at two to four events per month, with the potential to increase on demand and while include, and will include high school and college sporting events, youth education programming, and fundraising events. Doing the math, that adds, adds up to approximately forty-eight events. Given there are fifty-two weeks in a year, I can only surmise that there would be a shooting event almost every weekend. In my estimation, that does not include any practicing sessions or lessons which would be logically scheduled during the week. be logically scheduled during the week. Don't get me wrong, I'm in favor of increasing commerce and diversifying. I'm also not opposed to shooting sports, as I participated on a trap shooting team in college. That being said, I'd like to break it down. Shooting competitions vary greatly depending on specific events and rules. I'm going to stay in my lane here and stick to what I know. Trap shooting includes various disciplines according to the Amateur Trap Shooting Association. It involves shooting clay targets, which are released one at a time from a bunker or house and moving away from the shooter in varied angles. In the event Singles, trap shooters at a distance of 16 yards shoot five shots from different points in a semicircular field. Shooters rotate around the semicircle until everybody has completed five shots from each position. There are four trap banks. When the shooter has finished shooting at targets from those four trap banks, they have completed one round of 100 targets, 25 at each bank. Therefore, if there are 100 shots per person, per round, and you have 40 people participating, that is 4,000 shots, too many that close to town. Finally, the country roads, Holmes and North, in my estimation, cannot withstand the traffic involved with this permit application. As of today, with the rain, it is washboard and severely muddy and reded. Additionally, my experience having lived there for a time, when it does flood, the Holmes Road is completely impassable due to high water, and when the train pulls across North and Holmes, that property is inaccessible and would be to any safety vehicles unless you unpin the train. So if you're involving a shooting event, that poses a safety issue in my mind, that it would, the time that it would take to unhitch a train and find a way to get safety vehicles there. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Board members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Tyler Somerville. My family and I live at 898 North Simpson. I want to start by saying I'm an advocate of shooting sports. I'm a hunter, support safe shooting activities. I'm also a certified youth shooting sports instructor for 4H, and I believe that access to public shooting ranges is important for those who enjoy the sport or would like to learn in a safe and well-controlled environment. However, I am here this evening to request that the board deny CUP 2501 and the proposed shooting range in our neighborhood. My primary concern, as has been shared by others, is that the proposed location and the proposed direction of fire are in line with my property and those of my neighbors less than one mile away. Even with regulations in place, the possibility of accidents, whether from user error, equipment failure, or lapses in security, is not something our families should have to worry about. A mistake in this setting could be catastrophic. I'd also like to address that a sporting clays event inside would be almost impossible, so a building would probably not be reasonable. But secondarily, I have another area of concern that hasn't necessarily been talked to except by Mr. Hamilton, which is the zoning for that area. The development of a shooting range in the proposed location is not consistent with the county's development plan, as outlined in the 2022 Comprehensive Plan update. The plan's general land use policies state that developments must be compatible with existing land use and community character. A shooting range on designated prime farmland, which is what part of this parcel is, does not align with these policies. This would introduce industrial level noise, as we've heard, and safety risks to what is primarily a residential and agricultural community. Chapter 2 of the Comprehensive Plan emphasizes the importance of preserving agricultural land and maintaining the rural character of our community. Introducing a shooting range would disrupt these objectives also by altering the land use patterns and potentially encouraging incompatible development in the future as well. The current proposed CUP does in fact state both rifle and shotgun, trap, skeet, sporting Because of the way that it's written, it should be denied as written. The vision statement, though, in Chapter 3 then of the Comprehensive Plan advocates for sustainable development that respects the natural environment and promotes the well-being of residents. A shooting range conflicts with this vision by introducing the issues I mentioned already, which could then also have negative impact on property values. And in Chapter 4, it outlines the planning goals aimed at protecting ag lands from encroachment by non-ag uses. Establishing a shooting range in a designated prime ag zone would be in direct conflict with these stated objectives. Additionally, the plan advises caution in developing rural areas and floodplains to prevent environmental degradation and ensure public safety, and the construction of the shooting range, as has been mentioned, could pose significant risks related to flooding water quality and long-term land sustainability. So in light of these considerations, I respectfully urge the council to deny the proposal for the shooting range in our neighborhood. As I mentioned, I believe a range could be useful. An industrial zone is the Kansas State Legislature's recommended location for these types of ventures. Perhaps the council could consider an alternate location that aligns with Comprehensive Plan and avoids intervention from the state legislature. This outcome would support vision, goals, and policies outlined in the county Comprehensive Plan and protect the long-term health, safety, and character of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Don Madison, and I live right next to Tyler at 900 North Simpson. And we're in the, what I saw the plan, we're right in where it's going to be shot at. So anything considering a rifle is ridiculous there, and I don't want rifle bullets flying over my house. And I don't, and we have other problems with the, we have a lot of game there that would be, I think, chased off, because most of the time when big guns start flying, the game leave, you know? And so we have turkeys nearby, and we have deer that make that their home. And I farm right north of the, right north of this, on the Andy Price land and on Janice and Joe Kraus land. And my grandson and me are going to be driving tractors back there, and we don't really think it's a good idea to be shot at all the time. So we'd like to have you deny this, and like Mr. One guy said, that there's its bald eagles around there, and we have them sitting in our tree just east of our house, about 100 yards, and they're there quite often. And we don't want to see them get chased off either. And just think, there's a lot of room over on Magnolia Road that they could put this right off of. Magnolia and Holmes, where Jason has more land, and he could put it there if he wanted to do it. We don't want it in our area. And we don't want the noise, and we don't want our game chased off, and we don't want the danger, and especially any rifle stuff needs to be completely, absolutely done away with, because that's very dangerous. There's a lot of people. And my next-door neighbor, he was going to come tonight, across the road. He's the closest person to this in the direct line of fires. Name's Rick Jarvis, and he lives right across the road from me. And he said he's in the direct line of fire and noise that could go on at all times. And North Street is in a flood zone, and even signs say, "Do not enter when flooded," and some people still do it and mess up the road. With all the extra volume of traffic, I can't see anything good coming from that in times of high water. As boys, we liked to hunt down by the old river, and now these whole new generation of young people that would not, would be in harm's way by going down to the river, where we used to go down and play as kids. It's right north of this proposed thing. So I ask you to deny this permit, please. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. I am Dr. Richard Yapple, and I live at 416 North Holmes Road, which is almost directly across the North Street from the same site, next to the Maxwell's. I and my family have lived there for 30 years, and I am against CUP 2501. I am the great, 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 great-grandson of Peter Boyer, an officer of the Revolutionary War. I had a great uncle who fought in the trenches of World War I. My father fought in Europe in World War II. Other relatives have served in the armed services. I'm a retired internal medicine doctor and have served the Salina area days, nights, and weekends for over 35 years, retiring just this past December. My children grew up on this property, and hopefully my grandchildren and future generations will enjoy the property. I feel I've worked hard and earned a piece of the American dream, as have my neighbors. I feel we deserve the peace, solitude, serenity of country living, which would be disrupted by anywhere from 4,000 to 15,000 gunshots per session, two to four times a month or more, which is every good weekend day for family and friend get-togethers, let alone the disruption of wildlife, wildlife habitat, to include, as mentioned, deers, turkeys, coyotes, metalarks, owls, hawks, kites, bald eagles, and war. I'm retired and have worked hard and invested in this property, which is part of my retirement, and the value will significantly plummet. This area is used by others, including walkers, bicycle riders, runners, and runners, running teams from area schools. I walk my dogs on North Street and Holmes daily and have permission to walk neighbors' property. What is the effect of gunshots on domestic animals and livestock and horses? We all have had dogs that become neurotic with fireworks. What about the risk of stray ammunition? What about the effect on livestock and food production? And what about the increase of population in the area of farmers' crops and people not staying within the area? What about stray ammunition risk to ourselves and children, livestock, as stated, stray livestock and animals that aren't going to, we've had horses and cows get out of their proposed properties and have come on my property and have had been corralled? And what about the frequent crop dusters that come and fly low in the area? That happens frequently. And what about, we're in, let alone we're in the flight path of military helicopters and also air ambulances, and also at times, we're in the flight path of the Salina Airport. There is an increased risk of grass fires from stray ammunition, cigarette butts, and other smoking products, as I have already lived through a grass fire, which caused property damage to three or more properties from a spark of a locomotive. What about the safety of patrons in the event of injury or medical emergencies, as East North Street becomes impassable when high waters? And as stated, when the train comes, it will block both North Street and Holmes Road for hours, and nobody can get in or out, unless, of course, disconnecting the train. What is the environmental impact of increased population parking, sight series, intoxicated patrons, lack of respect for surrounding properties, and vandalism? The human waste, trash, lead, all affect the groundwater and the Smoky Hill River and the water distribution to other communities. What about the disruption to people of Salina of 4,000 to 15,000 rounds per session with the sound of a gunshot traveling two miles, and the city is only half a mile away? In conclusion, the CUP 2501 should not pass, and it is directly against the truths that are self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by the Creator with certain inalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. It will disrupt and infringe on our right to peace, solitude, and serenity. It puts our population at risk to include life and injury. It will devalue significantly our property. Our property and animals will be at risk. It will disrupt the ecosystem, wildlife habitat, including a protected species. It will pollute our water system and affect communities downstream. The patrons will be at safety risk and difficulty, with difficulties of extraction. It will put aircraft at risk. Grass fires are a constant risk. And what about the respective property vandalism, property damage, trash, intoxication, et cetera? Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kirk Kusick. I live at 2737 East North Street. I live on a, it's about an 89-acre property. It was homesteaded by my uncle's folks, and it was passed down to me by him and by my dad. And so I live on the land that I grew up on. And I will not be able to, as eloquently as others have spoken here today, be able to tell you the importance of this area, this land, and what the livelihoods are that the people pull from this land. One of the things that I do is I bring children to my property, because I am seeing the complete disconnect between our youth and our land and our earth. And I'm trying to reconnect those children by taking them to the habitats, various habitats that I have, and the Smoky Hill River does cross one corner of my property. I have native prairie. It's never been touched by the plow, which is something that is fast disappearing in Kansas. I also have forested area, which is native Kansas trees. And I take the kids to these habitats, and I introduce them to what Kansas was and what Kansas still holds important. I can't imagine bringing these kids out to the farm and having them out there and hearing the constant repetition of gunfire and trying to explain to them how important this is, this land is, these habitats are, these animals that are here. And we have seen bald eagles flying along the Smoky Hill River. I can't, I won't be able to put those two things together for these children. They won't understand why they're hearing all this commotion and this loud and this bang and this constant noise. And I'm trying to help them calm. I'm trying to help them experience what's out there in those habitats, and many of these kids have issues, behavior issues, and other issues that they're trying to deal with, and nature is one way of helping them deal with that. If this were to go in, it really ruins that. It makes it not possible, because I cannot put these two things together. One other thing that I would like for you to consider is I would imagine that you guys had to have a fairly long meeting on what you were going to do with that part of North Street that you totally tore up, had them come in, put rock in, and rebuild. Well, the reason that had to happen there was because that is the absolute lowest spot on North Street. When the river floods, it actually backs up across there, and then once it starts to lower, it takes all that water back. So everyone who has talked here tonight has talked about the issues of the water and the contamination of the water. So really, I would ask you to think, I would ask you to think, and would you be able to tell the folks in Abilene, who use the Smoky Hill River for their water, would you be able to tell them that, yes, we approved this? We didn't consider the contamination. We didn't consider the lead. We didn't consider what was going into the Smoky Hill River, and we are sorry. But what good will that do them? I ask that you definitely say no to this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I've already spoken once. I've been speaking to Jason Ingramanson as this is going on. First, I just would like to say that the intention was always that we would comply with the clay shooting objectives of, or standards, industry.
with the clay shooting objectives of, or standards, industry standards, which have very marked and different ideas of what can be done to minimize noise and the distances that those decibels travel. Regardless, I appreciate all the clapping. Hopefully, I can get some applause myself. Jason has told me we can just withdraw the application. He'll just go somewhere else. He doesn't want to. He is from this area, and he loves this area. He has land in Dickinson County. We'll just move somewhere else. We appreciate it.
All right, well, before we move on with any other questions, is there any other comments from the public that would like to make a brief comment? We're eight o'clock, reminder, you only have three minutes.
This goes back further than the Revolutionary War. You better talk to the Native Americans.
Okay, so being that the CUP has been essentially withdrawn from the applicant verbally, is there anything that we need to do, Tim, to cancel the application? Does it need any kind of motion to withdraw? What's the procedure at this point?
You could, I'm trying to think out.
Deny the application?
Yeah, just deny it.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we deny the application in light of the intended withdrawal. CUP 2501.
Whatever number it is.
2501? Okay, we did have a second?
Yes.
All right, well, it's been properly moved and seconded to deny CUP 25-01. We'll put it to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, public, for your input.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on to send, I would like to answer your question about race cars.
Yeah, sure.
For my wife and I, the response would be very simple. We call our son. He'd come over. We'd build a viewing stand up in our front yard, and we'd break out the refreshments and the popcorn, and we'd watch it. So that would be our response. But I understand what you were trying to say. I'm just saying that when you say race cars, we're like, where?
Yeah.
I think most of the people here own guns. They shoot, they hunt, we drink. It wasn't about any of that.
Not at the same time.
Right, right, right.
Hopefully, not at the same time.
So it was just that the peace and sanctity of our neighborhood was what was at the value of the whole thing.
Absolutely. And again, I thank everyone for their public input.
Do you have a question now that, since he withdrew and it's been denied? Is the 14-day appeal process null and void then?
Right. It's basically if it's withdrawn, then it's technically, he can't, it's, yeah, it's done.
It's non-appealable.
Can he refile for the same permit?
Right, that's my next question.
In 12 months, he can. It takes a year if it gets denied by the, there's usually a 12-month waiting period if it's denied before they can, for the same location.
Okay. All right, well, having that gotten out of the way, we will move on to the next item, which I believe is staff announcements for the best resolution, I believe.
In April, that was the April 1st County Commission meeting, directed staff to return the proposed best resolution to the Planning Commission to reconsider some aspects prior to the county's final consideration. This will be scheduled for the June 24th Planning Commission agenda.
Okay. Any other questions or comments about staff announcements?
I contacted our state representatives about possible tax, stuff that comes with the best. I've received back three responses. The 69th district representative didn't want to respond, but all the others did. Would you all like to see what they had, what they returned to me, or is that not something that you would want to consider?
If you got it to Tim.
Send it to Tim.
I've already sent it to Janelle, yeah.
Okay, okay, then we can look at that probably at the June meeting then.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn tonight's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Boogity, boogity, boogity.
All those, same sign. Meeting adjourned.